The administration asked me to take a look at the adult entertainment ordinance. Part of the reason for this was when we fully investigated a business earlier in the year, what happened and what became apparent was that in order to be an adult bookstore, an adult store, it's all based on the percentage of sales, percentage of sales, percentage of space utilized, and the code that we are currently operating under use the 20 percent mark. So 20 percent of stock in the establishment, 20 percent of the usable floor areas, what the current code says, or 20 percent of the gross revenue. And what we found, for example, is there's clearly room for people to take advantage of the law, and if you look in paragraph two, for example, the usable floor area, well, if you have 15-foot-high ceilings and a huge wall, you can fill your store with adult material and still not come under the requirement because the usable floor area was not utilized. So the goal was to lower the number to a legally acceptable number and to include the vertical display areas as well as the floor area. And so it's no longer usable floor area, it's now the area used, which also makes a difference.
Yeah.
That way, if I can't just get a huge warehouse and fill up one part of it with adult material and say I'm okay because I haven't utilized 20 percent of the usable floor space. So really, this really is to capture what people are in fact selling, and if they are in fact selling 15 percent of the adult materials, then they would come under the definition of an adult entertainment business. There are two ordinances in front of you. The two ordinances are necessary because there's a part of the code that deals with adult entertainment, and then there's a separate part that deals with zoning. The zoning code has to be passed using the procedure where, again, it goes to the planning commission, it has to be approved, so these ordinances will have two separate tracks if you choose to do this. The only other addition, other than the percentages that I talked about, was under the zoning law, under the adult material code section, which is 508.010, that ordinance actually says that the police may go in these businesses, that they can conduct inspections, and that's all approved, and if the police are doing that, in order to find someone guilty of a misdemeanor, they're going to have to get a search warrant from a judge if they're refused entry. So that's how that track would follow, but if it's going to be enforced by Mr. Holland under the zoning laws, we need to provide in there a right of inspection and an ordinance that would allow administrative search warrants for him to enforce the law.
Do we need to, I'm sorry, do we need to describe the nature of how an administrative search warrant works in here? I thought that existed in our, elsewhere in the code.
It is, but we didn't have a provision that would apply here, so I basically took the language from the other section. It's in the building code, is where it is now. And so I've moved it to the zoning code because this really has nothing to do with the building code.
For all the good it does with our judges.
Right. Well, we do have a problem there, and I've discussed this. I've discussed it with the administration, I've discussed it with Mr. Holland, and it's my conclusion that we're really going to have to push one of these and ask for an administrative search warrant, and when we get refused, we're going to have to appeal. And because this, we've tried to meet with the judges of the district court again since I came into this job, and basically I was told I already had that conversation with Paul Wilber's office, and I'm not going to have it again with you, so.
And there's nothing deficient in the state code about this, it's clear. It's their interpretation that says it's not in the state code for you to do this.
Right. What the way it works, the state, actually, the state law covers inspections of boilers, it covers health and safety inspections, but the state code and fire inspections, the state, there's nothing specifically in the state code authorizing local administrative search warrants for zoning law. But what the state code does do, and what everybody else recognizes, is that it gives powers to the local government to pass laws to enforce what are local issues. And zoning has always been a local issue, and you have the legislative power from the state of Maryland to pass a law to get an administrative search warrant issued. And, I mean, they use them in College Park, they use them in Baltimore City.
Yeah, but we've been refused for ones that could have been considered life and safety and residential.
We should not, I don't believe that those should have been refused.
We used to get them, and then they'd just stop.
Yeah, new judges came on board and they've started refusing.
Different judge?
Homes that were, they had.
Life safety violations.
Yeah, life safety violations that could be health or, you know, life-threatening violations that maybe the fire department saw when they went in there, but they can't, once it's turned over, they don't have any authority to get back in there.
Occupancy is an example right there, where if you're looking for an administrative search warrant to prove that a house is overoccupied, that's in the building code, and it's allowed to be done, but the district court's been refusing to grant them. And it doesn't make any sense, and they take the position, well, I don't have a state law authorizing it, but the state law basically gives you all the power of the state of Maryland in these specific areas.
Unless we said you don't have it.
And these areas include zoning law, the right to enforce the zoning laws, so it doesn't.
I think you're right.
I think they're wrong, but I think we're going to have to get an order from the circuit court.
Okay.
All right, so, yes, we could pare this down a little bit, it's just, the courts want to see that you're using a procedure that, what, in order to not be, or to violate someone's constitutional rights, they want to see that you're following a procedure to get the search warrant, and they want to, or, you know, that you have probable cause to get a search warrant, but they also will allow these administrative-type search warrants in cases where you're also doing routine inspections or routine. And so, in other words, if we set up a process where all adult entertainment facilities in the city would require an audit, an annual audit, then if someone refused to provide their records or refused to cooperate, then you should be able to get a search warrant to enforce that law.
Could a complaint generate?
Yeah, it says here that the investigation could be from a complaint from the actions of a member of the administration who's investigating, or as a result of a routine audit.
Okay. So, let me also understand, just regarding the zoning allowance, this doesn't change the proximity provisions?
I've got a whole.
Okay.
Well, Jack provided that to me today. He saw that this was on the agenda or spoke to someone, and he said, oh, back in 2008, we issued a report where we did the proximity investigation. I had asked Mr. Holland about this issue, and he was vaguely familiar with it, but it was actually Jack's office that did the investigation and made the report.
Well, there's no four proximity to it.
But we can, you know, I just got this this afternoon.
Well, there are, in the code, there are a number of provisions in terms of how close an adult entertainment.
Oh, sure.
It's the one where you can't be too close to a church, too close to a home.
Right, right.
And what they did was they created a map back in 2008 showing the areas of the city that would permit, and those areas are pretty much in the Westwood Commerce Park and in the Northwood Industrial Park. So those are the only areas where you have enough land and few enough type houses or schools or churches that you could do this. And there are other jurisdictions in Maryland that say you can only have adult bookstores in industrial districts for the same reason.
Would the current adult entertainment businesses in Salisbury, would any of them fall in those allowable areas? Because I see one part that's further south. No?
I don't think so.
And by our current definitions, just for everyone's knowledge, and I'm sure you all remember this, but by our current definition, unless we make these changes, Red Light District is not an adult entertainment business.
Correct. And then by virtue of the fact that all of their wares were hanging from the wall.
Hanging from the wall, wrapped it on the floor.
And hanging from, you know, racks and things like that, so even though the place was absolutely packed with adult material, they didn't qualify with 20 percent of the usable floor space. I mean, that may be one reason why they got such a large building, too.
So, one thing that could happen is that this would, this would change the determination that there are three, in fact, businesses in Salisbury within the city limits currently that are adult entertainment businesses. Two, it would enable us, using the zoning, that changes to chapter 17, it would enable us to check that. Three, it would lower the standards for what becomes a, what determines an adult entertainment business. And four, it would allow them to continue to operate for two years before they're measured by that new.
That's the last little piece in the end.
I read that, and be it further enacted.
Yes. That all businesses in the city would have to comply with this ordinance regardless of whether they preexisted.
Right.
At the end of two years.
At the end of two years.
Now, is that a, is that essentially what you have to do in order for any judge
to, you know, uphold this law? Do you have to give them that time period to come into compliance, essentially?
Yeah, the rule is, yes, sunsetting is what that's referred to, and, or what it's called, and if you do not give them a reasonable amount of time to relocate or to, in a reasonable place to locate to, it's not going to be upheld. It's going to be considered a taking of the property. I mean, you could legis, I mean, well, actually, it's a little more complicated than that because if it were any other kind of business, it would be a taking, and you'd have to compensate them, but this, because this is a bookstore-type place or facility that's an adult store, you have First Amendment issues as well that crop up, so you can't, with that, you must give them a place to exercise their rights into property.
He let the first one come in Salisbury, when it was on 13, around that bend, you let the first one come in, then you got the second one.
Yeah.
I'm surprised he didn't sunset it at all, it's not grandfathered.
That's what, that was.
I see the look on your face, we're both looking at each other like, what?
Under existing law, it would be grandfathered. If you were to pass this ordinance, it would sunset these businesses after two years.
Even the ones that are there now.
Correct.
I am absolutely okay with that. The negative impacts of adult entertainment businesses in cities is well documented, so I'm very much in support of that.
Interestingly, Jack told me back in 2008, when this report was initially submitted, he said they had hearings, they did everything, and he said the room was empty every time. So apparently, there's just no.
People don't care about this.
You know, this is not an issue that people.
It's not an issue.
But he said they were shocked that there was literally no interest when they passed the last law.
Yeah, I'm surprised that the business owners wouldn't come out.
But it's not hurting their business. Well, it's certain types of people that go to those, the bookstores.
Well, if we do this, if we do that, they may come out, because then they'll say, well, what kind of business are you going to decide next you don't want? Is that going to be my business?
Well, there's a precedent.
Or is it going to be landlords?
There's a precedent for this.
And then, no, I mean, they'll probably come out now.
All of this, all of these provisions that are in these two ordinances have pretty much been upheld somewhere else in the state of Maryland.
And where have there been not upheld?
Um, no, I mean.
Because 42's been upheld in Maryland, but it's been shot down by federal courts in California, so, and many other places. So, I mean, there are some that uphold it, and there are some that don't, so just hearing one side of it doesn't.
The U.S. district courts in Maryland have upheld similar provisions in Maryland. So, it's, I mean, again, if you're talking about exercising their First Amendment rights, they have to have a place to do it, and as long as there is a place, and according to the 2008 investigation, there was 8 percent of the city of Salisbury that was still available for these businesses to operate in.
Industrial Park, and you're saying Industrial Park and where else?
And the Westwood Commerce Park, the one on your way out of town that's out there, that new big commerce park. Because when I asked Bill about this, I said, you know, I've read the law, that we don't have a district where it's declared to be illegal use, it just comes as a normal bookstore or business, whatever that would be, it just has to be a certain distance away from all these other places. It is actually forbidden in the general commercial district, which is the district that runs primarily up and down U.S. 13.
Apparently forbidden.
It is forbidden there, that's the only place in the city.
So, an alternative way to handle this would be to forbid it in all setting districts except for industrial.
Which would be an alternative way to handle it if we find that there's not enough land still available. And really, what I would recommend is that you have Jack's office go back and check the numbers again so that at the time that you vote on this.
The problem I have with that, if you put them in Industrial Park, and I was in the business, adult business, where would I go?
One of those strip, there are lots of.
But churches in the strip mall, Hoops was, it's a church. So where would I go? Because not that many strip malls in industrial.
They're allowed, I mean.
I haven't had a chance to copy or do any of it, but that's it.
What you're saying is, it was allowed then, but it wouldn't be now, because what was a bar then is now a church.
Is that how old now?
Yeah, well, that's why I say, Jack, this is all from 2008.
And the public, I guess you'd have to advertise relocated to such and such a place. Because if it was against the law, general commercial, that you couldn't have this, why did we let them have it in the first place, at the corner of 13 and Church Street?
At the time those businesses were established, they hadn't passed this.
That's not GC.
Well, they hadn't passed the law yet. So those two businesses that exist on 13 were both established before the initial adult entertainment law was passed. So they, at that point in time, they could establish those businesses anywhere, anywhere that was for commercial, they couldn't do it in a residential neighborhood or something like that.
Because they got one made by the senior citizen place in the strip mall by that armory.
According to Mr. Lennox, he said that the reason they forbid it in the general commercial district was they, at the time, you know, they did all this, the whole north of Route 13, which was, everyone wanted to develop with good shopping centers and malls and all these other things, was available and could be taken for that purpose, which most, most other merchants wouldn't want to be next door to a place like that.
Yeah, the thing we have to recognize is that the negative impact on the visual that you get of Salisbury when driving through, it's not ju, there are other types of businesses that have similar impact, but, you know, this is the most egregious. The impact that it has on the perception of Salisbury is significant, it really is. And it's well documented, and it's not just Salisbury, it happens to a lot of cities and towns that haven't addressed this.
Yeah, Mike, Jack said that all the studies that were the basis of the original ordinance were still, you know, kept on record in his office, and there are, I mean, if you look at other ordinances that have been passed by other municipalities in the state, some of them list 100 studies that they, you know, reviewed before making this determination, all of which showed a detrimental effect.
Well, just to play devil's advocate, there's probably 100 on the other side as well. Commerce and, you know, whatever, but, yeah. I just need to see that updated because, obviously, from 2008, we have had apartment complexes built, we've had churches.
I told Mr. Lennox today, when he brought me this, this afternoon, I said, I was going to ask the council, do you want me to go back to him and authorize him to do that investigation again?
So is there some percentage of land that would be small enough that you could say, okay, you're effectively trying to outlaw?
In one of the cases I read, there were only four or five lots available in the entire municipality, and it was upheld.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they said that as long as there were four or five options available, that they did not see their First Amendment rights being trampled.
Just putting somebody in business, relocating.
Do they have, just out of curiosity, thinking a little bit back to the, yesterday year, the athletic complex, does that count as a, that's upright by?
I don't think it talks about the athletic complex. It's mainly schools, you know, churches, residences.
Yeah.
So, you can have it across the street from the softball fields.
I'm just saying.
Seventh inning stretch.
If you go there on a Sunday, Saturday.
You got a strip mall right by the milk and gutter.
Oh, I would give a new definition to a strip mall.
I mean, look, I mean, I recognize that it may put, it may put people out of business if they have to move their business, but, I mean, I remember the way we were treated by the purveyors of Red Light District, you know, they said, you know, we're not going to conform to your laws, we're going to open, we're going to stay open, and we don't care what effect it has. You know, the impact on our community is significant, and I think it is not our job to protect these businesses at all. They have a negative impact, not a positive impact on our community. That's my, that's my opinion. So, I know where I stand on this.
I know the public told me, why are we worried about Red Light District? And we have more issues to deal with than just dealing with that.
But we have lots of issues.
I know, we have a lot of issues.
So let's deal with the other issues, too.
Yeah, and they said, why are we spending all this money on the Red Light District? They thought it was crazy, you know?
We don't have to spend any money on this.
No.
We do when they sue us.
When they sue you.
If it's been upheld in other places in Maryland, I have every expectation it would be upheld here.
Gentlemen, any thoughts?
I'm abstaining from it, I'm not, you know, you know, I think it's awful. People don't have to go to the store. And I think if we were double standard, if we, I'm going back to this trolley, if we take young people to the bars to drink and be disheartening in downtown and in neighborhoods, what's the difference in the Red Light District? We're supporting drinking, and some of those kids could be underage, and then you're going to go and bother a business, whether we like what the business is, and put them out of business.
I'll go ahead and say this now, and I'll repeat it every time we talk about the trolley from now on, and I'm sorry I haven't done it before, that is 100 percent false. If you look back, I read the 1980 Rootat report yesterday. In that report, the number one recommendation was that Salisbury's first action should be to develop a trolley between a bus service between downtown and Salisbury University. In the 1996 comprehensive plan, it said we were going to do that within three years. In the 2004 comprehensive plan, it says that was a top transportation recommendation. In the Salisbury-Wakamiko Metropolitan Planning Organization Consolidated Plan, it says we're going to create a trolley between Salisbury University and downtown. In the current comprehensive plan, the 2010 comprehensive plan, it says we're going to create a trolley between Salisbury University and downtown. It said it every time, this community has agreed that it's a critical thing that we needed to do, this council and this administration did it in one fell swoop, and it is not an ethically or morally questionable act, it is a positive program that has a positive impact on not only our economy, but our relationship with Salisbury University and our relationship with the future of our city, which is young people. It is a positive thing, and it has no comparison to sex stores, it has no comparison to adult entertainment stores, which are universally seen across the country as having a negative impact on communities. There's really no comparison. So I take issue with saying that there is any comparison with something like that. That's like saying having a police force, or having a fire department, or having, you know, a public works department is morally questionable, and I take issue with that. Public transit is not in any way comparable to, you know, a sex store existing in your town. It's not.
All I'm saying is, you're putting a business out of business regardless of what it is.
It's not putting them out of.
And second, if it's something else you don't like, you can come and pick a zoning law to get them off the street, or whatever that you don't like, and I don't think it's fair, whether I agree with what's inside the store or what.
So let's right now identify what other uses we would include and treat in a similar way.
Whatever you think, whatever you all want to do, like the 42. You've had four bedrooms, only two unrelated people stay there, you know? I think you make laws to, to.
I think I was in high school when that was made, but.
Yeah, you were, probably.
But, you know, I had nothing to do with it.
All I'm saying, all I'm saying is, I just think that you're putting, relocating the business that you gave permission to go there, and I'm not talking about the Red Light District, there were two prior, one on the corner of church and Route 13, and the one that was on 13, I think they moved to that corner. I think that's been there for years and years and years and years and years, nothing was said, nothing came about till Red Light District came about. Those adult bookstores have been there for years, years and years and years, and out of the, and out of the one that was on 13, prostitution was coming out of there, and nothing was said, nothing was said. All of a sudden, when Red Light District opposed and fought, and we got legislation.
So let's be the people that fix it. Let's be the council that gets it right. Let's be the council that fixes it right now. Let's, let's not say that those mistakes of the past should be repeated.
Well, I don't have a problem with Red Light District store, I don't have a problem with it, and it's down on Ocean City, around the main Route 50, they got a store down there, which the county has no problem with it. I don't have a problem with that, because I think that is the First Amendment, where people want to come and get those kind of books, let them come in the store and get those kind of books, there's certain clientele that likes those kind of books. That's all I'm saying.
Couldn't they do the same thing from the Industrial Park?
I think, I think from my perspective, I agree with, you know, the Constitution's pretty clear about the right to have a business, but I think the location we could have some influence on. I see it, now, this may be a very wild comparison, but as a shooting range, there are certain places you wouldn't put a shooting range, either indoor or outdoor, and I look at this the same way. If a person is a shooter and wants to shoot, they may drive to Cambridge or Dover. If a person wants to buy that kind of material, they'll go where, they'll find it, somewhere. But I think that, I agree, when I, when you drive down Route 13 and you just, it's just, I don't want to have to explain to my grandkids, I have enough trouble keeping them in line. I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, have to address my grandkids and explain what that is over there. That's a personal.
And there are other businesses that have a similar effect on neighborhoods, and it's not exclusive to this, but this is the most egregious type, that's, that's.
Some of the other ordinances include head shops, for example, and the head shops where they sell bones and all the stuff for using marijuana. I mean, they include them right along with adult entertainment stores and do the same thing to them. One of the options we looked at was, and I chose not to include it, but I'll mention it to you, is to link sale of tobacco products to the, so in other words, that you, if you're going to sell the adult entertainment material, you can't also sell tobacco products. I mean, I think that's something you can legitimately regulate, but.
What's the connection there? I'm not, I'm missing it.
And just as part of the adult entertainment ordinance, you would prohibit someone who was in fact an adult entertainment place from also selling tobacco products.
What's the rationale?
I think you could, I mean, I think you could legally do it, I'm not suggesting that you do it.
Or beverages, or.
Clearly, you could link it to not selling alcohol and doing that, you know, I mean, that all those things could be linked. But really, you have to make a determination as to whether or not this business is detrimental to the city and to the surrounding businesses and communities that are there, and if you think it is, then you have a right to regulate it.
I have, I have to agree with Mr. Heath along the way that, and I think the point he was getting at is that when folks want the contents of these shops, they will seek it out, rather than this being an impulse buying thing, oh, look, honey, a sex shop, let's stop in. Most folks will, you know, find out where the place is and seek it out, rather than just being attracted by the building that says, magazine, DVDs, $9.99, all DVDs, $9.99 at sex.
Because really, aren't you competing with the entire internet?
It seems to me it's not a good business model for the future, but.
I wouldn't think so either.
And if you're trying to, and I'm glad you brought in internet, if you're trying to protect your children, these kind of things, then get on the internet and see everything, parental controls, but some parents don't control parental controls, so you're not protecting your children, they're getting in schools, everything, so they get the books, everything, they're in school. So if you think you're protecting your little babies, you're not, because there's so much stuff on. Because there's so much stuff on the internet now that they didn't get a hold of.
Sure. What, what I'm interested in is that the long-term revitalization of the 13 corridor in Salisbury is going to demand that these businesses not exist there. In order for it to be successful, that's gonna be part of it. So whether it's now, whether it's this way, whether it's later, whether it's another way, this has to happen. In some fashion, somehow. That's my opinion. If we want it to be, if we want Route 13 in Salisbury to come back, there are a couple imperatives. One of them is that Route 13 has to be overhauled completely and be more attractive. Two, the businesses that face it have to be attractive.
All right, Mr. President.
Now, now we're into who defines attractive and who defines, you know, I mean, Vegas Strip is pretty darn successful, are they?
Could I suggest-
Downtown LA is pretty successful.
Easy to define that. Most communities adopt design guidelines that define that.
Could I suggest we have the map upgraded and we look at it, update it?
Yeah, I, I think we need to look at what we have left.
I, I think that we have to. Because if not, then you, if, if we did not update this, we would have to find some location somewhere.
Right.
And you have to build it for them.
Because if it is done, you can't sunset it.
Right.
Can we bring this back to work session with an updated map?
And you have to build them a new builder and put it in.
We, we, we have to.
Mark, are you gonna ask Jack to do that, or do you want me to?
I, I, I basically said, do you mind if I asked the council this evening whether they wanted him to do that?
Is that, is that difficult?
No.
But I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll call.
So we'll get an updated, updated map? Okay. Any substantive changes to con, content we want to see between now and then? Or is everyone okay with this coming back from schedule with an updated map as it's presented?
I'll let you know after we read through it, just got it, so.
No, and, and, you know, even I, but after talking to Jack, might suggest some changes as well. Because I've, I've actually, initially, I, I went to the, you know, the building office and he asked them, you know, where is it available? And they had a general sense of where it was, but they didn't have any specifics on hand, so that's why we had to go to Jack.
Well, thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda is EMS billing rates review and recommendation. Chief?
I may have to pass over this.
Okay, there were like three other items on there.
No, 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 no.
Now, she's talking about prices.
The prices.
Gee.
Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is that the chief? I didn't recognize him on a uniform.
Trying to lay low. Before you again, in reference to making a recommendation to, uh, update our EMS billing, pursuant to a review completed by our EMS billing company as a third-party independent review based on their recommendations solely. What you have, what council has before them is, um, what the EMS billing company has provided as reasonable and customary upgrades or updates to the amount of, for billing for EMS services that we provide. They, as attached and provided to council in, in totality, was the complete study that they had, they, the billing company, which is LifeQuest in this case, had provided to us, including what they estimate, which I believe is a low estimate, but an estimate nonetheless, of what total amount of generated, generated revenue would be, should council look favorably on the adjustments to our EMS billing rates. So be happy to answer questions for you. What I, what, when we last we spoke, council had two requests. First request was, how does this change relate to, or correspond, if it does, to our standing mutual aid agreements that we have with our fire companies? The mutual aid, current mutual aid agreement was reviewed by me, subsequently sent to Mr. Tillman's office for review. I do not have Mr. Tillman's report. He may give it to you if he has it. What I can say is that following a review of the, of the mutual aid agreement, I don't think that the mutual aid agreement has any applicability to what we're discussing here. That's your fire chief's opinion. Certainly, Mr. Tillman can weigh in from a legal perspective. The second thing that council had asked of me was to ask the billing company what the demographic or associated profile of each of the communities they compared us to as it relates to billing. They, their, when they completed their work, they pulled together as listed on their report, communities that were demographically similar in size and shape and complexity and the amount of calls that they have. So the, that, they already have done that and it's already built into their proposal. So those are my two reports back to council.
Okay. Two questions.
Yes, Ms. Mitchell.
First one that comes to mind, I didn't have initially until what you were just saying. Wasn't sure what the mutual aid thing was for, but I read through it. What if you are doing a mutual aid call and you go to Delmar and you provide service to a resident of Delmar, in Delmar? Are they resident or non-resident?
They're non-resident. They are non-resident for our billing purposes. It would be no different from Delmar or any other EMS provider that bills for their service coming into Salisbury. They would bill the Salisbury resident at whatever rate. And by the way, what I would suggest to council is, um, is that the Salisbury Fire Department is, is the singular entity, and I believe I can speak, I speak accurately, Mr. Heath can tell me if he has any disagreement, is the only entity that answers to a municipal, municipal body for regulating its rates. All of the other are independent fire companies that get to set their rates based on what they feel. Would you agree to that, Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Actually, there's three questions. I forgot the other one, and that was, um, does council even have, are we required, or is this just desired for us to approve these rates? Because I don't remember approving these rates with any other budget.
This will be about, this will be the third iteration coming forth from a request to move the rates based on what's reasonable and customary. The last one came before council back in 2011. So it's been about three years and we, so we've, we've done the due diligence to, to try to move forward with, you know, not doing it every year, but at least looking at it and saying, is there, is there room for improvement?
I remember discussing it, but I didn't remember any specific action. And I couldn't find any, I was doing a resolution or-
I have a copy of the resolution that took place.
Oh, okay.
But I don't, I don't know that, I can't answer the question whether it was duly passed or not. It was presented. Whether it was passed or not is something that I, I wouldn't have an answer to at this point.
And then my last question was, the BLS, ALS-1 and ALS-2, what do you get for those rates when everything else is now broken out all at heart?
I'm going to refer to, let's see, the page-
I mean, I saw what it, how it determined which level.
Page two of the LifeQuest report, which would be page four in the packet that I have created for myself. It should look, it should look like, should look like this with highlighted rates. We'll give you an explanation of what each of those different categories provides for you.
I don't think I've ever been in an ambulance that they didn't give me oxygen, though, so.
Well, it would obviously depend on your condition.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess most of them probably have been breathing issues.
I did medical billing for my respiratory therapy back in my days when I worked at hospital. And this is a one-trip thing, am I correct?
Generally, yes.
Say, say ALS-1 emergency, and for residents, I'm in the ambulance, and you might have to give me, what's that, the, uh, intervention, what is that, the life support, what is that, ALS, what do they mean?
That would be, that-
Advanced life support.
That would be anything having to do with cardiac monitoring, intravenous solutions, cardiac medications, any of those advanced life support techniques, and that would be administered by a paramedic. If you're getting me as your patient provider, patient care provider, which I hope you don't have to rely on my skills, you would get a basic life support, which would be basic bleeding eventaging, oxygen administration, monitoring. You know, I don't get to monitor, I get to use an automatic defibrillator, but I don't get to use any of those advanced techniques.
This, this ALS-1 emergency rates is 650. Then ALS-2 base rates, that's what the intravens and all that stuff.
It would be three or more necessary.
$775.
It's actually three or more procedures is the difference, I think is what it says there, right?
Right, so we're gonna monitor and I can-
Okay, I'm going the cheapest route. All right, you go, say I'm going to do the, the first one, ALS-1, 650, I'm a resident. Then I go down here with a mileage, I'm charged the mileage too, correct?
Yes.
Charged the mileage, which thank God is mine's, mine and a half. Then if I need oxygen, 60 bucks, and that's for the masked disposable stuff, correct?
Yes. I, in the actual use of oxygen.
Okay. And the spinal thing, that's that board, right?
That's correct.
So if you fell down the stairs in your house-
Car accident.
Well, but you'd probably have to do that if somebody fell down the stairs too.
Depending on what they presented is interesting.
And then you're gonna charge me, if I don't want the care, don't want to be transported, 450, and plus the mileage, correct?
I, I don't think that that's-
You're gonna charge the mileage?
I, I don't, let me-
On scene is either or.
Say I don't, we don't go anywhere, you just come to my house.
Yeah, I don't think the mileage charge applies to a single, single point of contact.
All right.
It just, it just applies for transport.
Now, here I go. All right. Senior citizens. Go on, a senior citizen. And Medicare doesn't pay for ambulance.
It does.
Medicare pays them?
It does.
Depends on the condition.
Which-
It, some of them Medicare doesn't say that.
It, it will, it will requ, let me explain it in, in the best way I know how. It, it absolutely does pay for medical transport via ambulance. But it has to be for medically necessary transports. An example would be, I, I'm gonna make this up. I stubbed my toe and it's 3:00 in the morning and I just want to go get ice, an ice pack put on it by the doctors in the emergency room. That is a non-necessary medical transport. Our providers will advise you of that, and I'm gonna use you as I'm speaking to you. They would advise you that, you know, Mrs. Shields, this is really not a medically necessary transport. And you say, well, don't care, I want to go to the hospital. Mrs. Shields, you understand that Medicare is not going to pay for this call if we transport you, right? Mrs. Shields, please sign here to be, and there will be, there'll be something you have to sign saying that you are responsible for payment. We've advised you that it's not medically necessary and there's no way that's gonna get paid. Because we can't write it up any way that Medicare's going to pay it. Now, anything that you were explaining, anything that requires ALS intervention, they absolutely would pay for. And the rates that are being suggested by the billing company, um, first of all, it's illegal to charge more than what Medicare will allow. All right, so we can't do that. These are well, well within the Medicare allowable rates.
And, but what you're just saying, I do know case, there's one case that the lady passed out. Her niece could not take her to the hospital. And she called an ambulance and Medicare did not pay for it. And she went through her appeal process, you know, the process you have to go through. And she didn't win the case, so that's why I was concerned about that.
Yeah, a lot of times, um, a lot of times what will happen is it'll be, we will, we will have it written up in the best way possible to make sure that insurance payment. But then Medicare sometimes wants to exhibit its authority over certain things. Yeah, to do, our billing company has a mechanism to work with the, with the people that are receiving bills to help them through that process if they, if they wish to employ it. It's not always successful, but it's what we have.
And then, so, uh, one of the things that we're hearing a lot about now is the administration of naloxone.
Yes.
You roll up on somebody that's not breathing, you're gonna give them oxygen, you're gonna give them, um, probably start an IV, and even if you administer a little naloxone, can't talk, and probably slap EKG on them. So they're in the ALS with $450 bill and they're, they're flying now, their high is gone, they're mad at you, and they're up and walking. How are you getting that information to, to bill them?
Well, that would all be outlined in the narrative portion and in the treatment portion of our patient care documentation. At, at a certain point, given the naloxone treatment, it's for opiates and our other narcotics. Generally speaking, they're not gonna get to refuse transport unless they can, unless there's a legitimate reason that they overdosed and we had to prescribe that treatment. There's going to be some kind of police intervention that requires them to go to the hospital, so, so it's-
Because that, that was the one case I could see somebody getting up, walking away.
The ALS- The ALS and BLS on-scene care are generally, this is a general statement, most of the time revolve around diabetic patients that have low blood sugar. We arrive, we give them some sugar, and all of a sudden, they're back. And, and they're, they're cognitive and coherent enough to refuse treatment, and they just need to take better care of themselves. That's what that's for. Up to now, we're not billing for it and therefore not recouping any of that money, of which we have responded. We have treated with a, with a medication. We have probably administered, we, we've done some things and we're getting zero for that particular care.
And they, insurance is not likely to cover that if they don't get transported either, I would think.
I think it will. I think it will because of the medical need of their, of their case. But again, it will, there's a lot of, there's a lot of determining factors here. How well is it documented? What is the, what is considered to be the patient necessity? And our, we, we are very proud of our providers. They do a really good job at, at trying to write them, giving enough detail to make sure that whoever's reading it will understand that whether it's medically necessary or not.
Do you generate a local form to, to satisfy that need? Because I know Medicare actually has a form.
Yeah. Our form is basically, it's, it's suffices for the Medicare form. It's copied after the Medicare form, provided to us by our billing company. They know all of the, the legal ease, if you will, sorry, didn't mean to insult you, Mr. Tillman. They know all of the, all of the ways to write it and make sure that it follows that form. And it's all done electronically. So we have it on our patient care tablets. So it is, it is read, it is even signed electronically with a stylus to do that.
Makes more sense to me now.
And it, and it, all, all of that gets uploaded every day up to our billing company. They review to make sure that the medical necessity forms are filled out correctly. They're reviewing it from top to bottom.
But that has to be reiterated, I think, you know, that the medical necessity has to be reiterated, reiterated to, especially to the elderly population. Because I've had, you know, many, many, many complaints, you and I know that, but, yeah, it, it goes off the radar a little bit.
It, it is unfortunate, but a lot of times, especially with the elderly community, um, we, we review the medical necessity form and we, we kind of try to coach and guide as we would our, our parents, or our grandparents. And generally speaking, once their mind's made up, it's made up and we have to provide the transport. But, and, and usually comes back to, they come into our fire station and I, I've taken many opportunities to sit down with them and try to help them through it. And generally, they understand, they're not happy about it, but they understand what's happened. But it all will revolve around the medical necessity for transport.
Well, that, you know, the, the transportation guidelines are getting more and more strict as time goes by. It's just something we have to look at.
So-
Each one of us has a bit of reality.
Yeah, I would agree.
So if you respond to something, maybe somebody just moved here and hasn't changed their license yet, I guess that's what you're using to do?
It's where, it's where the residence is. So if they have an apartment here or they're living here, you know, we're-
Like a car accident on scene, you'd probably look at their license or something like that, or their tags might be out of state.
But we, there, there's going to be those anomalies that take place.
And they could come back to you and then get that straight.
They're gonna have to be those kinds of things that happen. Generally speaking, you know, only except for the worst cases of car accidents and stuff like that, or they're not able to communicate with us. Generally speaking, they're gonna tell us what their address is. They're gonna verbalize where their address is. We're not gonna look at their driver's license, probably. If they're unconscious, can't do it medically, or, you know, traumatic experience, they can't do it, then we'll look at our driver's license. But generally speaking, we're getting all of their information from them personally.
I figured you were getting it from the police, not physically looking at the license or something like that.
No, we're, no, 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 we're, we're trying to get it for ourselves. And generally, we're, we, we use the information gathering as an assessment tool for their medical condition.
Awareness.
Other comments or questions? Ever uncomfortable with this move forward to legislative session?
Yeah, if it needs to.
Yeah.
There is a resolution associated with it. I'm sorry, an ordinance.
I see that. Yeah, Laura's question regarding whether or not council needs to take action stance. Mr. Tillman, do you have a, what, whether or not council needs to approve these rates?
It's my understanding that it has always been done this way. I mean, it is really a setting of fee in the same way we set other fees. So I'm not sure there's a specific ordinance authorizing it, but I, from that point of view, I see it as, as required.
So should this be done now, or would the-
I was just gonna ask the chief to get me, if he can get me all this Medicare, Medicare forms.
Sure, sure.
Put it in my box, call it heck, put it, you know?
Sure.
So when they call me again.
It would suggest in the ordinance that a table format is a little more clear than the paragraph format that we have, or the, the way it's listed. The way that it's presented to us in our briefing material is a lot easier to figure out. out, um, what you're being charged for than the way it's laid out.
Yeah, I'm happy to make that change, as long as it's suitable to council, it's easy to do. I, I tend to agree with you.
Yeah, I think we've seen other ordinances where a table exists in the code. Can we, can we have that?
That's all we did with telling, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I just used the last one as the basis for this one, so, but I'm, I'm happy to do that.
One recommendation, typically, it's difficult to read for reproduction if there's any gray, um, grayscale kind of, if we could do without that.
I can do it without, it's my OCD, though.
I like it, it looks nice. Just talking about reproduction.
I like it, but, okay, I'll take, I'll take care of it. I'll take care of it.
All right, so this will be the legislative session. You want to go with that?
Yeah.
All right. And that's the last thing on our agenda this evening. Um, anything else for the guilty?
Yes.
Michelle?
In our book, um, I put my... In my book, it says, um, what every new and seasoned municipal official should know. And then it says, engage in council, restrict yearly, yearly each new council.
Oh, hey.
So you know what I'm talking about, the goal-setting section.
Don't worry, I haven't forgotten.